I'm coming up, so you better get this party started I'm coming up, so you better get this party started I'm coming up, so you better get this party started I'm coming up, so you better get this party started I'm coming up, so you I'm coming up, so you I'm coming up, so you better get this party started I need you so hard, when I'm around you baby Can't touch the sky, can't make my time burn tonight I need you so hard, when I'm around you baby Can't touch the sky, can't make my time burn tonight I need you so hard, when I'm around you baby Can't touch the sky, can't make my time burn tonight I need you so hard, when I'm around you baby You know I want you so bad I need you so hard, when I'm around you baby Can't touch the sky, can't make my time burn tonight I need you so hard, when I'm around you baby Can't touch the sky, you know I want you so bad You know I want you so bad
Taking me higher than I've ever been before I'm holding back this much that I can't move on You're just a high, you're just a feeling You're in my heart and escape, they don't mean it And if I can find a way to stop the storm Oh baby, it's out of my control You're just a chance, I'm just dreaming You're just another day that keeps me breathing Baby, I'm lost, where is that, there's no control Baby, go something, hide away with me for more You're just a high away, you're just a feeling You're in my heart and escape, they don't mean it And if I can find a way to stop the storm Oh baby, it's out of my control, what's going on? You're just a chance, I'm just dreaming You're just another day that keeps me breathing Oh, oh, oh yeah You're a day that keeps me dreaming
I know you can hear me I know you can feel me I can't without you
Last night, I couldn't even get an answer Tried to call, but my pride wouldn't let me down And I'm sitting here, with this blank expression And the way I feel, I wanna curl up like a child
If I told you once, I told you twice You can see it in my eyes I'm all cried out, with nothing to say If I told you once, I told you twice You can see it in my eyes If I told you once, I told you twice You can see it in my eyes If I told you once, I told you twice You can see it in my eyes Told you once, I told you twice You can see it in my eyes
Last night, I couldn't even get an answer Tried to call, but my pride wouldn't let me down
But that should never stop you
Just sitting here, with this blank expression And the way I feel, I wanna curl up like a child
I know you can hear me
Sweet dreams are made of this Who am I to disagree? I travel the world and the seven seas Everybody's looking for something Move it on 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 Everybody's looking for something Some of them want to be abused Sweet dreams are made of this Who am I to disagree? I travel the world and the seven seas Everybody's looking for something Some of them want to do Some of them want to do is find you Some of them want to lose you Some of them want to be abused
I want you, oh I want you so Do you want it right now? Oh I can't let go I want you Do you want it right now? 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 I want you Do you want it right now? I want you Do you want it right now? I want you Do you want it right now? I want you, oh I want you so Do you want it right now? Oh I can't let go I want you, oh I want you so Do you want it right now? Can't let go I want you, oh I want you so Do you want it right now? Oh I can't let go I want you, I want you so Do you want it right now? Do you want it right now? Do you want it right now? I want you Do you want it right now? I want you Do you want it right now? I want you Do you want it right now? I want you Do you want it right now?
I want this last round, that's living the moment My baby Anywhere Who do I need to know? Who? That's so shady Do you still like me? I'm really low You swore that only you could love me though But it seems you gotta make it so that I need you I even gave you my keys to be mine And it's all that you wanted to have All I want is you I want this last round, that's living the moment All I want is you All I want is you All I want is you
And you know, keeping my heart unusual for me Try to hide my vulnerability And I know, I know, I don't need you Just la-la-la, this thing goes down You swore that only you could love me though But it seems you gotta make it so that I need you I even gave you my keys to be mine And it's all that you wanted to have All I want is you I want this last round, that's living the moment
All I want is you
Ay yo, listen Now let me tell you why you got a choice tonight I'm about to take you to this place that You most probably gonna forget about tomorrow But the grass is green and we are gritty Ay, why the fuck not?
Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes Lips, shaking asses All the girls want backstage passes 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 All the girls want backstage passes
All the girls want backstage passes
All the Monday I can't let go Then I find I can't show you Then come Sunday waking up girl I keep running, running back to Running, running All the Monday I can't let go Then I find I can't show you Then come Sunday I keep running, running back to I keep running, running back to My heart sings You feel like you know I'm climbing over again Oh, my brain It's like a broken record I keep playing Sorry, satellite, there's every paradise Just like I'm no one to you Add it in once in paradise We push for paradise, feel like a man All the Monday I can't let go Then I find I can't show you Then come Sunday waking up girl I keep running, running back to
I'm coming home 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 I'm coming home, I'm coming home 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 I'm coming home
I'm coming home, I'm coming home Tell the world I'm coming home Let the rain wash away all the pain of yesterday I know my kingdom awaits And they've forgiven my mistakes I'm coming home, I'm coming home Tell the world I'm coming I'm coming home, I'm coming home Tell the world I'm coming home Let the rain wash away all the pain of yesterday I know my kingdom awaits And they've forgiven my mistakes I'm coming home, I'm coming home Tell the world I'm coming I'm coming home I'm coming home I'm coming home, I'm coming home Tell the world I'm coming home I'm coming home I'm coming home I'm coming home
Must be the reason why I'm king of my castle Must be the reason why I'm free in my trust soul Must be the reason why I'm king of my castle Must be the reason why I'm 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 king of my castle Must be the reason why I'm free in my trust soul Must be the reason why I'm king of my castle Must be the reason why I'm 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 king of my castle
Bad day when ladies all for you You drip on the way ah Rap niggas still sad and rich Off the cake on the way ah Take your flight, you wanna take a lift On the body, man, he's on the way ah I might take a shot, I might take a risk Don't matter, baby, I'm straight ah
Feel like I'm in princess house Velvet paint all on the walls ah Sitting down on this fancy couch And I can't sleep straight, I'ma stay ah Twenty-two, I'm an pirate, baby Got stripper tits on my face ah Roll up in a bandy, I'm Christian, I'm family I'm a pirate
Bad day when ladies all for you You drip on the way ah Rap niggas still sad and rich Off the cake on the way ah Take your flight, you wanna take a lift On the body, man, he's on the way ah I might take a shot, I might take a risk Don't matter, baby, I'm straight ah Bad day when ladies all for you You drip on the way ah Rap niggas still sad and rich Off the cake on the way ah Take your flight, you wanna take a lift On the body, man, he's on the way ah I might take a shot, I might take a risk Don't matter, baby, I'm straight ah
Feel like I'm in princess house Velvet paint all on the walls ah Sitting down on this fancy couch And I can't sleep straight, I'ma stay ah Twenty-two, I'm an pirate, baby Got stripper tits on my face ah Roll up in a bandy, I'm Christian, I'm family
If everything goes How do we survive? If everything goes Ah If everything goes If everything goes If everything goes lifeless, how do we Ah If everything goes If everything goes lifeless, how do we Ah If everything goes If everything goes lifeless, how do we survive? You were in late on the night, should we survive? If everything was lifeless, how do we survive? Survive, 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 survive Survive, 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 survive If everything goes Ah If everything goes If everything goes If everything goes lifeless, how do we If everything goes If everything goes lifeless, how do we If everything goes Ah If everything goes
The underground
This is a moment of my passion To bless her, give her say
Nadavano lino na kama konosii Forza animal ancestral Mejama, meflama Me fijo amor que desejo ficar con você Chaka reca boca loca de mora De mora na sua barriga Vem me embolir com seus beijos Vem matar o meu desejo Tá de mim de boa Presente Here we go Let's get loud, let's get loud Turn the music up, let's do it Come on people, let's get loud Let's get loud Turn the music up so we can sound Let's get loud, let's get loud Nobody gotta tell you what you gotta do Let's get loud, let's get loud Ain't nobody gotta tell you what you gotta do Tá de mim de boa Presente Here we go Let's get loud, let's get loud Nobody gotta tell you what you gotta do Let's get loud, let's get loud Ain't nobody gotta tell you what you gotta do Maria Maria She remind me of a west side story Maria 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 She my mommy of a west side story Growing up in Spanish Harlem She living life just like a movie star Maria Maria She fell in love with East L.A. To the sounds of the guitar Play by color sent in love Maria Maria She my mommy of a west side story Growing up in Spanish Harlem She living life just like a movie star Maria Maria She fell in love with East L.A. To the sounds of the guitar Play by color sent in love
So, das war eine gute Stunde Sunset Session wollte ich schon sagen Nein, Afterwork Session heute hier Ja, nach sechs Monaten endlich mal wieder ein Livestream Jo, wenn euch das Set gefallen hat, gerne teilen Set wird definitiv bei YouTube weiter online sein Ja, schaut mal bei YouTube vorbei, dort findet ihr das Set dann weiterhin Ja, ansonsten bedanke ich mich fürs Einschalten, Zuhören, Reinhören Jo, wünsche euch weiter einen guten Wochenstart Jo, sage Ciao bis zum nächsten Mal Wir hören uns bis dahin, bye bye, ciao ciao